So, starting the the board meeting. And there's the public comment period ordinarily, but there's no public here. Next is the treasurer's report and approval of expenditures. So Bob, you're on deck?
Okay.
Up to bed, I guess, rather.
And the finance meeting, we reviewed the monthly bills and concurred. Finance meeting recommends that we approve payments of $29,730.10, monthly expenses. Would make a motion in the board to do that?
Is there a second? Evelyn, I didn't hear you. Did you second it?
Oh, I told Bob, I can't because I'm on the committee. I can't second, but I told Bob, he just made the motion, so you don't need to make the motion again.
First and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstentions? Any negative votes? The motion carries unanimously. The next item is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Anyone against? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, the first item on the regular agenda is the grant acceptance. I think you probably all know that we received a small grant from the Preservation League who has asked that we not publicize our receipt of the award until they have an opportunity to publicize it themselves. But in, we do have to approve accepting it, accepting the contract. The materials are on the Dropbox. I don't know whether anybody has any questions on this. Is there a motion to, yes Evelyn?
Question. Did we ever get any clarification on whether, on the issue of approving it without noting who the grantor actually is? I know that was our discussion, and I don't know what happened with that.
The open meeting people said that we were required to do so by law. We could not go into an executive session. Does that answer your question?
Half of it that we need to accept this grant in our public session. But the question is, can we do it without naming or alluding to who the grantor is at this point, or how do we deal with that?
Well, I didn't, I did name it.
Oh, I did hear you.
I named the grantor.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Didn't actually hear it.
Yeah. Any other questions? Is there a motion to, for us to accept this grant?
I move that we accept this grant.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor? Are there any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. The next is the 2020 election. Paul? Is that your?
Yes, I just put that out as a review of where we are. We do, of course, have two candidates, and we have a budget that will appear on the ballot. We have absentee ballot applications online. We sent out a email burst also with those applications. We expect to send out another large burst of emails, including that absentee ballot. I expect there'll be, you know, a lot more absentee ballots than were used at this point. I think there are still people reluctant to come into a public place, you know. We set up the election at Maine. We were planning on using the Reading Room upstairs, which will give us enough room so people can feel comfortable and keep a distance from their neighbors. So that will be set up with some long tables and also some direction for people. We just couldn't possibly plan the election as we usually do in the office. There's just not enough room to do that. We do plan to go ahead and Lansingburg in the small room as you enter and restrict people, basically one at a time, to come in. Generally, there's a lot fewer people in Lansingburg than there is at the Maine Library. Trying to think if there's anything else. Questions? Anybody got questions on the election?
Do people know how many candidates we have? Has the board been told? Oh, yes, it was in your report.
So, I think we talked about that at one point. We do have two candidates. We will meet tonight. Brianna Clark and Jerry Gesser. And there are two positions, so.
So it's likely that both will be filled and that.
And you're muted if you're talking to us.
I'm muted?
Kirsten was. I saw his mouth moving and his hands moving. I didn't know if that was directed toward us.
So I'm still confused. Kirsten, are you talking to us? He will in a moment, it appears.
Thank you. I'm sorry. It took me a few minutes to figure out how to unmute myself after I had done so. I apologize. For purposes of the minutes, could we say when the election is?
Ah, the election will be held Tuesday, September 29th, from 12 noon until 8 o'clock in the evening at both the Maine Library and the Lansingburg Branch.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the the election?
Just if you're voting absentee, when can we begin to apply and pick up a ballot?
You can apply right up till, when is our deadline, Joy?
Let me double check.
Yeah, you can, you can apply right up until, what, that Friday?
I believe.
Depends on whether you're mailing in the ballot or whether you're bringing it in in person.
Right.
If you're mailing it in, it's supposed to be post-March, the Friday before. And then if you bring it in person, you can bring it in right up until the same day.
Any other questions?
What was the ending time? It goes from noon until?
Eight o'clock.
Eight? Okay.
Yeah, eight o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is review of revised 2020 budget.
I hadn't planned the full review. What I have is a question. We had reduced the book budget considerably. Let's see, materials budget reduced to $52,075. And then last meeting in August, we added an additional $10,000 to the materials budget in the modified budget, based on the fact that tax collection has been not, they're not getting the decrease that they expected. And so tax collection has been actually ahead of 2019 so far. So I have two other items that are generally related and come out of the book budget that I'm requesting we also purchase. And one is the annual subscription to Hoopla, which is $4,526. And the other is the annual magazine subscription, which is about $3,200 at this point.
When are they due, Paul?
What's that?
When is payment due?
They're due in October. Because they basically set it up the magazine when they set up for November. But they need the renewal in October. The Hoopla is again due in October. The Hoopla is basically a prepayment, because Hoopla charges per use. So that is an estimated prepayment based on the use of the Hoopla this past year.
I know, I'd feel more comfortable if, rather than doing it by bits and pieces, that we have the Finance Committee take a look at whether we want to adjust our modified budget for the new information that's coming in. And since payment isn't due until after the next board meeting, I think we have time to do that.
Yeah, we definitely can wait till after the next board meeting.
Yeah, I also agree with you, Marie, because one of the concerns I have is that when looking at tax, the tax levy, the money coming in is an awful lot of that money from residential households is in escrow accounts that were collected before COVID started to hit us. And we may, you know, the worry is, is that the tax receipts are not going to continue at the brisk rate that they are continuing, at least from the residential sector.
And we've not received any formal notification from the city as to what we can expect in terms of our tax revenues from this last tax deadline. And I would feel more comfortable if we had an official statement from them. So will we refer that, can we refer that to the Finance Committee?
That would be fine. I just would like to clarify. The last time when we wanted to get information from her, we made a formal appointment, and we got a lot of good information. Subsequent to that, you had said, let Paul do the lead in terms of talking to the city and obtaining information. Paul, will, will you be able to get a clear statement from Andrew? Or you want any help in getting that? Or how do you want to approach getting the information?
Well, I can certainly ask, and, you know, I think he'll give us as honest a statement as he can. We also, though, will have that large payment by the October meeting, which we can use as a comparison.
Physically, we'll not.
19.
Okay.
So we should have some, something to go on.
Okay, we should have it. Okay, good. All right, fine. And so putting this off until next month makes a lot of sense in many ways.
Okay, so the next item is the review of the safety plan. Evelyn? Did you, or Paul, who, I don't know who the appropriate person is to?
Well, we, we, and we came up with a small revision. I put in the Dropbox. I don't know if everybody got that. But Evelyn did have a question related to people who have difficulty with wearing masks or allergic to, you know, the chemicals in the cleaner or any other of those kinds of issues. So we did add a statement to the safety plan, which acknowledges that there will be people who may have problems, and we will continue to be offering curb service. So we encourage them to call us or go online to the website. And then we also added the idea that you know, anyone who wants to make an ADA accommodation request can direct that to me, either in writing or verbally. So those two things, we are talking about including in the safety plan.
Do, does anyone have a question?
I just want, do you have an idea because people have been, have you had people requesting that, Paul? Or you just, you want to be?
Really, so far, we really haven't had really any requests like that. So, but, you know, the when we, when we look at the lawyers' webinar, they do recommend having statements like that in our regular safety plan.
Right, good.
I think everyone has a question.
Well, it's not a question. It's just being clear on the why. It's one of the things that has been strongly suggested that legally we should have that in there. And I, you know, Paul didn't know if it was absolutely necessary, but again, if you went through the attorney's webinars, it's something that she really strongly says, what do we have? I mean, we want to have some accommodation policies, period. But now we need to have it in writing as part of our safety plan, just to make sure it is acknowledged, again, that we have thought about it and are responding to.
I mean, I think it looks like a good idea to have both these items in there. It makes good sense. I'm just a little, I'm wondering why, it seems like there are different lines of communication that are being described in those two different paragraphs. And is that the intent, or is that just because they were written at different times? You may want to align them to be consistent in how that contact is made.
And the idea was to keep it as simple as possible, especially with the ADA piece. So that seems to be the best practices in how to deal with an ADA piece. And the other was for those more general needs that are very much I'll call COVID-related, or related to the reaction and cleaning from this pandemic. So it was, that's why there's the two pieces, in a sense, two lines. But it can all go in one section, and it kind of covers us without going into too much detail.
Does someone want to make a motion to add this to our, our safety plan? Evelyn, is your hand up?
Yep, sure. Oh, in fact, I'm looking for the minutes because I love the way Michelle wrote it, and I put it up here on purpose, and I can't find it. I motion that the board approve the revised safety plan as stated at today's meeting. That, Michelle, if I quite changed it, you can put it back to your words, please.
Is there a second?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Kirsten?
If I understood Evelyn's motion correctly, this is the entire safety plan here. This is the entire revised safety plan, or is it your intent to, to add this to the safety plan?
Well, it would be revised because this would now be added, so.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're making a motion to add this to the safety plan? Okay. In that case, I'll second it.
All in favor? Abstentions? Oh, was that a question or a favor? Evelyn?
That was the question.
Okay, anybody abstaining? Anyone against? The motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the director's report. Paul?
Yes. I did send out the RFP for the 2020 audit to five firms, and that will be due back in October. I did cover the election. I did, I want to, I want to say, I want to kind of emphasize that you know, our staff has really been doing a great job, given the fact that everything is completely uncertain. And, you know, we're, we're not doing what we ordinarily do, and we kind of have to, you know, modify things as we go along. The staff is, is doing very well in adjusting, and I think very skillfully handling, you know, patron issues. We've had a couple of mask issues, and, you know, the staff has done well in dealing with those, and actually, we haven't had as many as I first expected. The Masonry Project got a bit held up again because we need a variance from the Labor Department, or essentially patching the paint on the east wall rather than removing it all. So apparently, you know, there needs to be a variance. We should get that. It's, it's pretty much expected. And it will take about two weeks to get the variance. After that point, that will go back out to bid, which will include the hazmat, the materials. I did submit our construction, Public Library Construction Grant for 2021. That project involves repairing the floor in the kitchen and the basement. That's the last tiny section of floor that is not concrete. So we do want to replace that floor with a poor concrete, concrete floor. And also, it involves a separate project of repairing the the roof drains in the Reading Room. There's four big roof drains. It includes insulating those drains so that you don't get a condensation buildup and so you don't have a lot of leakage and damage to the walls. Replacing the vents, and of course, repairing the plaster and the paint. So I guess that's all I have.
So SHPO, you need to get SHPO approval to, for the construction grant to be submitted?
Yeah, they did have some additional questions, and so I gave them additional information. I haven't heard back. I expect we'll be okay.
I heard somebody else's voice. Did somebody else have a?
I started to ask Paul, and the material where you're pouring a concrete floor, what's the material presently?
Oh, it's wood. It's wood over dirt. And the wood has rotted.
Okay.
So we first, we first discovered that somebody's walking on the linoleum, you know, and it has this gill that's sinking. And so we pulled that back, and the floor is just rotted.
Wow. Thank you.
It's funny, that, that floor originally in the building was all dirt. This, the floor has been poured a number of times in the past hundred years. All of the, where we use for storage now, all of that was, that's been re-poured. Everything else has been re-poured. We just somehow completely overlooked that one tiny room, still has a wood floor.
There might be a little bit of wood in the adjacent room as well, so we may want to just, there may be one more piece. I'm not, I don't want to say it's 100% everything. There might be one more piece left after this.
Is that the boiler room?
I think it's the, as you go from the elevator into this room that we're talking about, the dressing now, immediately to the right of that room is another room that I think has got a wood floor, I think.
I had, also, Paul, you have a mention of the 2019 audit?
Oh, yeah. We just got a target date, actually just today. We've been sort of pursuing sickle or tortilla and so on for, you know, to pin this thing down. Right now, the target date is the end of September. We expect to have the 2019, 2019 audit, at least a draft of that audit.
Regarding the 2019 audit, I wanted to ask any board members who haven't sent in their reply to, of the questionnaires that were sent out by the audit firm, to please get those in, so it's not us who are holding up the audit.
Yeah, they said that could hold up a final. It shouldn't hold up the draft, but it can hold up a final.
I know they usually give us feedback if, about it. Any other questions or comments on Paul's report? I did ask him to share with you the stress that the staff and he is under because of what they're contending with at this time. And I, I know, I'm very pleased that he's been able to open the library to the public without having to shut down. So the next item on the agenda is observations and community feedback. Does anyone have any? Hearing none? Any old business or new business? Evelyn?
I'm just wondering, does our board want to consider formalizing an anti-racism statement? I know the library put one up at one point, but I'm looking at different organizations, different libraries, Upper Hudson, and many are coming up with a formalized, you know, commentary. And I'm wondering if we want to go through that process.
Any discussion?
I don't know what the process is, but I think that's a great idea.
And certainly, we want to make it clear that we are here for everybody, for the entire community, and anybody should be felt welcome.
And I guess the process would be, you know, again, the library has already put up a statement, but it's, you know, looking at the wording, reviewing it, and then actually going through the approval. Obviously, not tonight, but on.
Is there a committee that that's appropriate to be led by, or would this come back to the board?
Well, since the library did come up with a statement already, we could, you know, use that as a jumping point, which means it would come from the administrator. I believe it was the administrator to put it up, or staff.
Paul, is that? Is it a policy? Because if it is a policy, we should be approving it. Anyway.
I don't know if it was a policy or a statement.
I think it was just a statement that was drafted by a staff member to put up for us.
Shall we review, have the opportunity to review it and discuss it at the next meeting? Is that what you had in mind, Evelyn?
Yes, yes, I think so. I know we couldn't do it tonight anyways, but having read some more of these statements, it occurred to me that we should actually bring this up.
Okay, let's do that, let's discuss it in the next meeting. Now, Evelyn, something that you usually bring up is the nominating committee, don't we need to establish that now?
Yes, we do.
So the nominating committee is established to determine a slate of candidates for the officers after the next election. Generally, the officers are drawn from people who have been on the board rather than newly elected. So who would like to be on the nominating committee? Evelyn?
I guess it's like an annual I can't think of the right word.
Okay, so the other people who would be eligible to be on this committee would be Bob, Kirsten, and Michelle, since Arlene, right? Or are they eligible, Arlene and Mark?
Well, they'll still be board members until October's actual meeting.
Okay, so also, Arlene and Mark are eligible to be on this.
I'll be on it. I'll be on it.
Michelle, was there somebody else who?
Kirsten waved.
Kirsten? Did I see hand and mark, or were you just flailing?
Everybody's, everybody's muted. Luckily, I can read lips.
I'm not seeing him muted on Mark. Mark, I, I'm clear. Oh, we can't hear him, but I'm not seeing that he's muted.
He's muted and unmuted, but maybe his volume's turned way down, or his microphone's unplugged. Thumbs up if you're volunteering for the committee.
I think you might have to unmute on your Mac, that's what I have to do sometimes first. Even though you can hear everybody, we still can't hear you.
It would depend on when, when the meeting is, Marie, I'd be happy to participate if available.
Okay, so Bob, and maybe Mark.
Yes, he said yes, he gave a thumbs up. I think that's the universal sign of agreement.
Okay, so we'll send out a doodle poll to try and establish a time that's convenient for everyone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Very bizarre.
Okay, so we're at the end of the agenda, unless, I assume, I would have heard if there were any new business or old business. We're on public comment, does anybody here as part of the public want to speak?
I'll speak.
Freda?
Yeah. I just wanted to tell the board about an initiative that we're doing with the staff, the friends received a contribution of money, and in cooperation with the staff and Paul, we have purchased gift cards to Stewarts of $5 each for people who come into the library and complete the census. So the census has to be completed by the end of September, and initially, the library staff and some of the friends had gone to training on helping people complete the census, and then the virus happened, so we're re-instituting this, this practice, and working with Stephanie and this, and Dale and the, and the staff to ask people if they've had a chance to fill out the census, and if they're interested in getting help in the library, and if they complete it, they'll get this $5 gift certificate.
Nice. And that sounds as though it's at both branches?
Yeah.
Okay.
I completed mine at the library.
That's very nice, Freda.
Yes, it is, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Freda.
We just have to get people to do it.
Yeah.
Now, at a time where people don't really want to be out doing things, right?
And, and thank you to the friends for also putting out the email about the, with election information.
You're welcome. I felt like it hadn't gotten very much visibility.
Anybody else from the public who would like to speak? Well, I guess we're at the end of the meeting, then, the next meeting will be held on October 13th. And we've been very concise this evening.
I know, I know, the one night that we have to get back, that we're getting back on at 7 o'clock, we're done early, come on.
But at least I'll be able to refill my iced tea in between. That's a good thing. Okay.
If only I had a piece of the traditional pizza.
I, I don't remember, do we need to?
I don't think so.
To adjourn? Okay, then we're adjourned.
See you guys back at 7:00.
Yes. Join us.